Continuing the moratoriums until we can make more progress.
Hoping the mail one doesn't take much longer, so.
Yeah, well, I think hopefully tomorrow and Marlene did send us the guidance document from the Cannabis Commission, which is hot off the press, so we've been working without guidance and now if you read the guidance, there's, we're going to talk about that tomorrow, but yeah, I think it'll be helpful for our discussion tomorrow. Okay, any other questions on that section? Okay, next is discussion, SLAB Board Retreat Dates in July. Marlene, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, so I just want to plan a little bit in advance so we can make sure to obtain a good facilitator for you if you so choose. And I recommend this summer possibly using Mr. Jeff Nutting. His information is in your packet for you, but he is actually very limited on his availability. So I'm curious to know if we could possibly look at a retreat on either July 11th, 25th, 30th, and 31st so that I can get him under contract. And if not, then I would need some direction about how you would, how you would like your retreat to go if we don't use him.
I'm okay on the 11th and the 25th of July.
What about the 29th, 30th, or 31st? It's the fifth week in July.
Yeah, it's fine, we'll make it work.
The 20, that, that, I kind of like those dates because it's the fifth week.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't normally, we wouldn't normally meet, we usually meet during the day.
Yeah, Mass. May our time.
At Mass. May our time.
29th is my birthday, so.
29th isn't an option.
Yeah.
The 30th or 31st.
Okay, 30th, I'm sorry, it's my bad.
Sorry.
I'm fine with that, well, so the 30th, if we met July 30th, which is a Tuesday during the day instead, does that work for people?
That works.
It's okay for me.
Yeah.
And what about the 31st, in case he's now booked for the 31st, 30th?
He'd want to find during the day. Far enough away.
Right, right.
I don't think everything on my calendar, July 30th yet.
Yeah, July, beginning of, I, yeah.
July 30th or 31st, I would say the reference is the 30th, but if he is now booked out. And we, I don't know, what time do we usually, we usually meet in the morning, like around nine or something?
Nine.
Nine, nine, we're usually done by two. And once we know we're having him, we can have another agenda item to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
What we actually, what are, what we'd like to talk about or how we'd like the retreat to go, but let's get the.
Let me see if he's still available and I will report back.
Okay, great, thank you. Next item is Mass. Dot and F H W A Cape Cod Bridges NOI. Comment deadline, May 31st, so I just want to. So there, there was correspondence in our packet related to this agenda item that came from John York. I just, the item was on the agenda before I got that email from John York, I had already put it on the agenda. But his email came late on Thursday, it came Thursday afternoon after the correspondence packet was done. And I put it, I had it put into the agenda just because there were a lot of really useful links in his email that you could easily reference stuff, so.
He is very thorough.
Yes.
Very. It just helps.
I agree, I know, he's taught me a lot, actually.
One of the things that, the reason that I had it on there is, one of the things that's become apparent to me in some of the discussions that we've had about, on the stakeholder meetings about the Bourne Rotary Projects that are sort of in process, like the Rotary projects that was just done. There were suggestions made in that stakeholder meeting that had Chief ESAP and the Lawrence Litt people and Mass. Dot people and Marlene and myself and, and some of the chambers of commerce have been meeting sort of every two weeks, just, it's like a 10-minute meeting, just to talk about things. But there were some suggestions about signage and putting markings on the bridge or signs on the bridge so people knew which lane to be in. And the feedback is, well, that's outside the project scope. The project scope is just the Rotary, the bridge, nothing on the bridge is included in the project scope. So it kind of occurred to me that this NOI for what they're going to be reviewing in the environmental review is, is pretty important to make sure that the scope covers things that are important. And there's a, there's a pretty broad scope in what they, in what they say, they talk about the intersections, the, the project scope areas and the two bridges and different connections between 28th and all this other stuff. And they do say that they're going to be doing, they'll study potential environmental and related social and economic effects of proposed transportation improvements through Cape Cod. That's, that's in what they're doing. There were a couple of things that I think they, I would like them to do. And I don't know if we want the board to say things or we just want to do individual comments. But one of the things that we need to talk about, I think, in this is that local trans, the local transportation infrastructure in the community, it's important that it stays connected, including school buses and autos, you know, because we're in the unique situation that the Cape Cod Canal splits our community in two. These bridges are important connections for, to keep our community together. It's not just for people going through, it, these are, these are essential to having a continuity of the community. So I, I wanted to say that the environmental impact statement and the NEPA review need to take into account the unique situation in the town of Bourne that is a result of the Cape Cod Canal splitting the community of Bourne in two. The configuration of the bridges and all related infrastructure alternatives needs to make sure, one, that the local transportation infrastructure network in the community stays connected for all users, including school bus, auto, bicycle, and pedestrian users, giving them access to businesses, schools, municipal services, and other transportation resources. That the community of Bourne, local traffic pattern connections to the bridge project study areas are taken into consideration during and after bridge reconstruction to avoid the gridlock on local roads that is a problem now. That there are no dead-end frontage roads created that don't have an option to directly connect with the main road. Because that was one on the Bourne Bridge that I think would be really negative. And that the operations of Bourne Scenic Park are taken into consideration. The Scenic Park Campground is a great recreational and economic asset that provides recreational access to the canal for campers and provides patrons for local businesses. Keeping the campground visible during and after construct, viable during and after construction should be included in the project review. And I just wanted to make sure that those things aren't lost in translation, you know, that there, that there is a comment that says these things are important to Bourne.
Right.
I don't know if anybody else has anything to take.
And what, I mean, does this also include environmentally the impacts? Or, you know, when we look at, you know, the, the debris and disruption of sediment and, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to be putting barges in canal that's going to disrupt the flow of a waterway. I mean, what, I mean, as well, I mean, we have not just the, the cyclists, the bikers, we have boaters.
Right.
Recreational, you know? And fishing and, I mean, those things, all those things invite, I mean, is that the time as well? Is this the also, do we go down that road of what are, how are they mitigating that, those types of impacts? As well, I mean, because that's a concern.
It is, it is a concern and.
And long-term too, during, before, and after, right?
Yeah.
Because when you think about the, the environment as a whole and how that's going to disrupt fish, actual, you know, game and fishing and.
Habitat, yeah.
Habitats and that type of erosion that's going to occur. That's not something that's going to end when the bridges are done. There's going to be a long-term impacts of those things, so.
One of the things that I think happens, and I don't know that much about these, this process, but the review is a review of alternatives to make sure that the alternatives that are chosen have the least impact in what they're looking at. But I think that these local impacts have to be taken into consideration in the alternatives.
Right.
That, and one of the things that John had written to us about John York was that they have, on the Sagamore Bridge, they have the sidewalk on the west side. Where everything that you, if you were, if you were living in Sagamore where the residents are, right? If you wanted to walk over the bridge and connect to the bus or connect to the stores in Sagamore, connect to any of the businesses, all that's on the east side of the bridge. So why did they put the bicycle pedestrian on the west side when everything that you want to connect to locally would be on the east side? And what's, how, how are they making altern, you know, how are they looking at that? So that was one of the things that got me thinking about the local connections.
Right, right.
Well, back on the mainland, back when the Rotary was there, there wasn't much infrastructure there. And the Rotary, you know, was a way of calming the traffic down until you can get across.
Right.
Where now it's a straight shot and everything else, so the bridge wasn't designed to what, what was there 20 years ago. So going forward, we got to make sure that it is designed properly, fits, fits the needs of, and, and the businesses in the area.
So accessibility to all those businesses in there.
Yes.
I mean, people need to get to work.
No doubt.
And people.
And it's, people don't walk on those bridges very much now because they're scary, I mean, but.
Right, they're not pedestrian safe.
If you put a good lane in that's going to be provided for walkers and bikers and it's going to be used, make it useful as transportation, not just as recreation.
And moving forward as part of any ADA or, you know, walk pedestrian program on these new bridges is I want to make sure that these sidewalks are maintained year-round because the same thing we hear every winter is we, we don't, we don't, we don't clear the sidewalks.
Right.
You, Mass. Dot says it, US Army Corps says it, but what's the sense of having, in having assets if it's not going to be safe? So I guess any, moving forward, I want to make sure that those sidewalks are maintained year-round.
So pleasure the committee, do you want to send a, a letter from the board or do you want me to just send my own letter to myself?
A letter from the board, it sounds better.
I think a letter from the board sounds a stronger message, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
So I could add in something about school bus, auto, bicycle, pedestrian boats and fishermen.
And the trash, too.
I mean, the.
I swim on one side, too.
Generally, yeah, the whole habitat, when I think about. It's, it's going to be a major disruption on the habitats of our fish and wildlife in, along that canal.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and even beyond. And the long-term effects of that, I need to consider, the impact just doesn't happen. It's before, during, and after.
Absolutely, especially if it's year-round, without any breaks. With the busy times year, evacuation, you know, hurricane season and so forth.
Okay, is there a motion or?
Motion to send a letter to.
A comment, a comment soon.
Yeah.
On behalf of the whole board.
Okay.
To Mass. Dot and F H W A Cape Bridges NOI.
Whatever the, the comment address is, send us the comment address, okay.
Second, does someone second?
Second, second, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Now we will move back to.
Item seven.
Item seven, yeah, I think they might have missed communication because we had the meeting at 6:30, started the meeting at 6:30 so you could be early and then we just went on and figured you'd come.
That's what I thought.
At 7:00. All right, so we have already opened a, a public hearing on the question of renaming Perry Ave. South of the canal to Stone Throw Way. Marlene, you want to just talk about what's in the packet about the logistics?
Sure, so this is a compilation of comments from town departments, just for your consideration. We're, we're not recommending anything, but this is just so you can understand what happens next and what steps we generally take when a road name is changed.
So, so engineering said that they have to notify E-911, they notify the post office, they have to update the GIS letters for road names and parcels at the end of the year splits, revisions typically in April, assessing would also update the addresses in their GIS master system, master list immediately, change the assessing maps as well as the hand-drawn still. The police chief said, once we receive notification from Tim that the change of address has been filed, they would update the in-house address system and verify the 911 system has been updated. They would also work with the affected addresses to perform tests of the 911 system from addresses to confirm it was working correctly. And then the memo also states that after thinking about the options relayed at the SLAB Board meeting, extending Abtuxit Road, they say that this is one of the least desirable options for the police department. While we will make anything work, Abtuxit and Perry have an actual intersection with a stop sign. When two roads with the same name intersect, it does cause difficulty in our reporting systems. He did say if utilizing existing roads, we would prefer Ship's Passage to be extended as that seems the more natural extension of the roadway. But Ship's Passage is a private royal road, right? It's not a public road, so we wouldn't be able to extend that one. And then DPW talked about name changes. I did call the chief today and ask because one of the questions that's come up in the past is whether, is the concern about emergency services at the current address? And I asked if they could do that 911's tests from addresses to confirm that the new address is actually working. I did some research on 37 Perry Avenue and I found that in Google, it's, the directions work correctly. In Apple Maps, the directions worked correctly. In MapQuest, there's two entries on MapQuest. There's a 37 Perry Ave in Bozards Bay that references pretty much where Kennerway Place is, but it says these are bad directions. This is what this is, but these directions can't be used because they're bad directions, there's a problem with this. And then they have a 37 Perry Avenue dash OFF in Bozards Bay, which has 37 Perry Ave south of the canal where, where 37 Perry Ave currently is. So I kind of bring that up because it took two years for the change of address for the police station to be updated in the system. So people would know where the police station was. And when they talk about the. When the chief says we would update our in-house address system and then verify the 911 system, all the cross streets have to be manually updated. So that question of like if it's going to Abtuxit or Perry or wherever, that there's, the police statement, the police department has things that they have to do. And then the third thing, if you get the board enterprise, there was a tale of two road names editorial about what happened in Vineyard Haven when they recently changed the name of Beach Street Extension to Anchorway and Google changed the whole Beach Road to make Anchorway and then they had to undo it, so.
Google? It's not that smart, is it?
I don't know, it's kind of working, but, yeah, yeah, so.
Police and fire, no, that one.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, so that's, the question before us is the, is the hearing. And we did get a letter from Historic Commission, the kind of like the Abtuxit Road Extension.
They agreed on it four to zero.
Yes, they, they had letters in our packet, so they, they did.
So they want it to be Abtuxit Road Extension, not?
No, no, what they said was, after discussion by the commission members, a motion was made to continue the na, the, continue the name of Abtuxit Road onto the now-named Perry Avenue. So the Perry, Abtuxit would start over by Offshore Road then come around. But when you actually look at that, that's a, that, Abtuxit Road comes to a stop sign.
Yeah.
That intersects with Perry Ave and that, that's what the chief says he does not recommend because it's an intersection that would go in two different directions and they, they can't do that. They wanted the little piece of Perry Ave that would be from Abtuxit Road to Pass, Ship's Passage as a tuxit extension.
Got it.
But we can't vote on that tonight, right? We can only vote whether to approve or deny the name change to Stone Throw Way. That is the question that was advertised in the public hearing. So if we approve it, then that would be the new name. If we deny it, then we would start the whole process again and potentially, I don't, talk about a diff, whatever name would be a name, but I would think that we would talk to the police chief about that Abtuxit Road thing. He wasn't at the, at the Historic Commission meeting. So pleasure the board.
I guess hope that, because we're probably going to end up denying this request tonight procedurally and then open, advertise and open a new public hearing, but I just want to hope that we all are on the same, the petition is, the town, everyone's on the same page with a name when we, when we do the next public hearing so we're not going down this road again, I mean.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
We're really happy with this.
I mean, this is, this is like a yo-yo, up, down, up, down.
Yeah, yeah, if we had started with no name and it would have been, we could have figured that out and it would have kept going.
Yeah, but that's not, I mean, it's.
It's unfortunate that we can't somehow have an, a motion that can be twofold, but it's, it's the way the, the hearing is.
And I think the question, the question is what would we name it? I mean, if, if, I, I think.
Stone Throw. Wouldn't that solve it all?
The, the name that was agreed upon at the Historic Society meeting was Abtuxit Road, they're very happy about that. If we come up with anything else, we'll have to go to another Historic Society meeting.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I just don't want to be 85 by the time.
Yeah, exactly, your, your child would be in high school.
Man, like, let's go here.
Their letter says should be called as Tuxit Road Extension.
Two meanings, they go, right.
There, no.
In their letter, right here, the last paragraph.
The change would mean Abtuxit Road would begin at the railroad underpass of Shore Road and continue easterly to a stop sign where it would then turn right and go down to Sandwich Road at the five corners in Bourne Village.
Just read the rest of paragraphs.
Right, and then the.
And then, at the stop sign, if you took a left at the stop sign, that would be Abtuxit Road Extension.
Correct, that little, that short piece of Perry Ave.
So, but the question is that if you, so suppose you're going from, suppose you're going to, we're getting down a rabbit hole here, but suppose you're going to Abtuxit Trading Post.
Right.
And the directions are, okay, you're going to, at five corners, you're going to.
Take a right.
Right, onto Abtuxit Road and travel how many feet until the road is going to turn left? And then if you're going to Ship's Passage, you would take the right onto Abtuxit Road and then go straight onto Abtuxit Road Extension to get to Ship's Passage because Abtuxit Road would turn. And I think what the, and I think what the issue for the police chief is that he would prefer if there's an intersection, that there be a road name that's consistent at the intersection. But it's, you know, we have other roads that are intersections where you come to County Road and if you take a left, if it's shore, if you take a right, it's.
Beach.
Oh, it's landing, right.
Trail Bridge. And if you go straight, it's Sandwich and then Perry.
Sandwich, right, and that's a big.
I think people are capable of staying on the blue line.
Yeah.
Think Google Maps.
And it's not necessarily rocket science, you know, it's Tuxit Road, Tuxit Road Extension, yeah. If you get lost, then you're in trouble.
When can we advertise this and get this public hearing in the paper and then on an agenda?
Well, we have to have another agenda item to decide what road we wanted to have the name of. And then we'd have to, then, then we'd have to, after we decided what road name we wanted to have, then we'd have to have a public hearing. And then after we advertise, after we advertise the public hearing. I would, however, get a point if we were going to change the name from the police and fire on that name. I mean, get that formal thing.
I guess we'd like to see this done, it, it's reasonably as quick as possible. Instead of, I, I know, it's a process, but.
I mean, I, I would, I would, I would give you my opinion. My opinion is that it is, it either should stay Perry Avenue, be renamed South Perry Avenue, or if the board wants to change the name, change it to Stone Throw. The Historic Commission did not like Stone Throw because they felt it wasn't related to the real history of the Bourne Stone, which is as a.
It's, it belongs to the Herring Pond Wompanoag.
Yeah, you know, because it was a.
If we really want to be honest about the Bourne Stone, I'm just going to say it. It came from Catherine Parker's doorstep, who was a hirsh, who was a herring ponder living on the Herring Pond lands in Bourndale.
Right, and it went to her house.
So that's the story of the Bourne Stone.
It went from her house, from the Herring Pond meeting house where it was the, the, and then they, when they took it from there, they put it to Catherine Parker's house.
Exactly.
So they, they did not like the Stone Throw name.
Well, MJ, you've had an agenda since day one about Perry Avenue, sticking to that, but you don't have kids that are 17 months old that could potentially fall out of a tree, it's a safety issue. We want to get rid of Perry, please.
For God's sakes, please.
All right, so.
I would like to have, if, if we're.
We're going to have to have a motion here.
We have to have, the board's up to make a motion. I would like to have a 911 test call, you know, to see, like, what happens from Perry Avenue with the current address. I mean, the, the theory is here that there were delivery problems before the address was updated in Google and other places where.
And after.
Well, it's still not updated in MapQuest, so we don't know what they're using. But the other things are updated. It's, it's up to the pleasure of the board, make a motion to what you want to do.
It may not be popular, but motion to approve the Stone Throw's way as submitted.
We don't care, we just want it to be not Perry.
It's for discussion.
Okay, is that motion by Peter to approve the request for Stone Throw Way as requested? Is there a second?
We'll second for discussion.
Okay, you second?
Yeah.
Okay? Motion by Peter, second by Ann Marie. So now the motion is on the table to approve the request for Stone Throw Way.
I just think, no matter whatever name we pick, it's never going to be, not, not, not everyone's going to be happy with it. And we're going to hear complaints where, you know, the public safety departments don't like it for this reason. We have another, another agency in town that doesn't like it because of their reasons. I mean, we just got to just find something that we all can live with and be done with it. And they took the time to put this application together. I mean, the historical significance, I mean, no, no matter what the name is, we can put another sign underneath the street. put another sign underneath the street sign that says formerly Perry Ave. So this way they know the historical significance of that area so we don't forget that part of it as well. Believe me, there's enough people around that know about the historical significance and we can make sure that it's signed properly so people know, know it. But, I mean, I guess we're just making a mountain out of a molehill. I just think we're just making more out of it than what it has to be.
Any other comments?
Well, the Wampanoag tribe, I mean, we have to respect for their heritage and.
I know.
And onus of our, their, their tribal land and, and property.
The other thing too, so.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I think we, we didn't bring the petition forward. Our, our citizens did, so I agree, you know, it's nice to be recognized and I really, in my heart, appreciate you saying something about that. I mean, I, I don't know if Stone Throw, Stone Throw Way is a bad name, but I do sort of understand where the, the Historic Commission is coming from. And I think the Abtuxit is a, that, that name is, that seems more appropriate as long as the police department and fire department agree with that. I, I think the emergency responders are really my concern in, in a way. I really, I really lean toward what, what Chief ESIP and the fire department say. So I think that's where I stand. I mean, of course, I'd love it to, love to have more roads in town and monuments that, you know, recognize the Wampanoag people or some, something, but picture in this room or something, you know, but, but, you know, can't have everything.
I wanna have some respect for their decision about the Abtuxit. And also the, someone brought up the point of trying to add apostrophe S in a GPS when you ever try and do that. That's not easy either, but I think.
So, I don't, I don't not like the name. I think the name is great. I just think it's, there's others and there's others that we have to, we might think it's okay, but I know that we Historic Commissions expressed their.
Yeah, I wanna give them that weight.
Fire Department.
And, and they didn't have the input from the fire department or the police department on why they wouldn't want it to be that name. So then they've, it's difficult to make these decisions without going, that's why there is a public hearing process to get the input from the various people that you need to get input to make a good decision. And it's not, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's work that has to be done and people that have to be notified and other people that will be affected that own property or, you know, use those roads to get to where they're going, so.
I won't take it personal with the, if it was voted, voted down. I just want the discussion out there so we know, so we, one, one way or another way of a process moving forward.
I hate that it's so, you know.
So, there were, I mean, there were other suggestions that were made by people that wrote to the board in the original letters, you know, we got talk about South Perry Ave, we got to talk about Abtuxit. We didn't really have a discussion about ourselves about the Abtuxit or whether there's something else. I mean, I, I don't know that there might be another road that would be a good name for the road that would be, so that, that's the question. But anyway.
Can I just say something?
You can come to the mic, yeah, yeah, great, certainly.
So we knew about this list, right, before this meeting? So why isn't anyone from the Historic Society here? Why isn't anyone from the police department or the fire department here? Why are we extending this to the point where maybe we'll just get sick of it and say screw it? Like, I just, I feel like we're being played. It's, it's, it's getting a little personal at this point and I'm getting really frustrated.
I think that we are stuck in a process that is a public hearing process. Which requires us to advertise for this particular name and then to hold public hearings. And in these public hearings, questions have been raised. It was brought that the Historic Commission should weigh in on what, what, on the road name suggestions. They had their meeting, it comes back to the board. It does take a while and I apologize that it takes a while, but it, it is kind of the process and.
Because when people oppose it, then you have to go back to the slate and re-discuss it and.
Right.
I, I mean, I thought we were originally, it was like, oh, that's a great idea, you know? And then we had to pass it on to other people and then you get more, more bodies, more people thinking about it and then here we are.
That's the function of the public hearing, unfortunately.
Exactly, right, right. We, people need to be able to send their opinion, right?
Too many people in the soup.
All right, so there is.
And everybody has a different idea.
And everybody has a different idea, yeah.
But they're the ones.
We have to respect everybody at allowing people to have their opinion and have their say and that's our public hearing process and we have to listen.
But we're.
I move to vote then.
Do we already vote? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request for Stone Throw Way. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
No. We need to.
Any extensions? Okay, so motion fails. One, two, four. So I will have pleasure the board. Do you want another agenda item to discuss possible name changes for this road? Or would you prefer to have a reverse nine-one-one test done for this location to see if it works for public safety?
I don't know, I mean, does, does, I think that they, you know, that's to see if it, the current name works, you're saying?
Works, yes. Cause I, I didn't, I hadn't really thought about that. I mean, I didn't really know that there was such a thing. And when Chief ESIP wrote that if they did the name change, that they'd have to put it into the system and then they'd have to do a reverse nine-one-one to see if it works.
To test, you mean.
To test to see that the new name works. And so it seemed to me that you would do that test to see if the current name works, if it's an issue.
Just wondering if you do a test, but the applicant is the only person that lives on the property affected on that street and they're the ones that wanna, they feel more safer themselves if they have a name change. So I think we should do what the intent was originally, is to find a new name for that street as opposed to doing a, not a test going down that road. So my motion is to schedule a meeting, to schedule the first available meeting to start the process for a name.
To figure the name, right.
We place the name of the street. And at the, and then that meeting, we'll, and, and at the same time set apart, and once we get that name, then, you know, we'll work with, through the advertisement process and that. But for now, let's get it on the agendas. We can start working on a name that we all can agree with.
Do we wanna go back to the Historic Commission and ask them if they have a, say to them that Abtuxit, these were the, this was the comment of the, the police department on Abtuxit? And do they have another name or another thing that they suggest or do?
Yeah, go back to them. I mean, it's only a couple of weeks.
It's not like Hurricanes where they get a little list, you can just pick the next one.
Yeah.
Next letter.
When a storm comes, you get a storm, you can.
I'll second his.
Street name, I don't know.
So the mo- so the motion is the first to.
John New York's gonna put his hand up in a second, just so you know.
Oh, is he there?
Yep.
Is he putting a hand up?
No, I think.
Oh, no, that's the mouse. I always.
He turned the camera on and now it's, it's usually, that means he's gonna be, wants to speak.
Did you wanna speak, John?
Maybe not.
I think he said some problems with his getting sound.
Sound.
Yeah. And so the next available meeting, do you want me to make a request to the Historic or whoever?
Yes, yes, please.
Has to be put on the, the next agenda. So that way we're not delaying it that long. We're probably looking at weeks because I think, when, when, when did Historic Commission be? On May fourteenth. So May fourteenth was the second Tuesday. So the second Tuesday in June will be the eleventh. So ask them to put, to put this on the agenda, on their agenda for June eleventh so that we can keep it moving. And may, and maybe if we meet that night on the eleventh, then we can discuss it that night based on what, because some of us can go to historical meeting during the day and report back to this committee that night.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to see it.
Yep, okay. So we have a motion for the next available meeting and to request the input from Historic Commission.
Can we forward the comments to them?
Yeah.
And for the chair, would it be appropriate for the town administrator, we have the both public safety representatives at the historical meetings, so this way we're trying to pull everything in one shot?
No. The select board holds the public hearing. They'll provide input to you.
Okay, I'm just trying to, because, in, in, in time, just trying to consolidate, that's.
Well, I think that, I think that the, the, the point is that if we're gonna rename the road, we rename that road so that it, the intersection is clear.
Yep.
And just figure out what other options are, since the people that live on the road don't want it to be called South Perry Ave, so.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Seeing none of us. Okay, so we will move right along.
I have to, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You gave my daughter a beer when I clocked out and I don't know where she gets that.
Aye, why not?
Good night.
Good night.
We have that on record.
All right, now we're on reorganization. All right. Get my paper here.
I got the heat cups. Good luck. My feet were itchy this morning, my palms, and my mother says I always mean to come into money.
That's it, itchy palms, definitely, I'm gonna win a bingo tonight.
She was born in nineteen oh five, she didn't, she knew it all.
All right, all right. So I sent to the board over the weekend the procedure. So first office will be considered will be the chair. Members of the committee who are interested in being chair will be asked to indicate the interest and provide a statement of interest. After all, who are interested and made their statement of interest, they can be asked if they wish to be placed in nomination, motion to place the names in nominations. Select board will discuss as necessary and vote on the motion. If there's more than one nominated, each select board member will vote by roll call. The nominee receiving the highest votes will be the new chair. In the event of a tie, there will be a runoff vote between the nominee and the same number of votes. So, and then we'll do that same sort of process with the vice chair. And then with the clerk, traditionally, the new member is the clerk, as requested. There have been people that declined that privilege, so we'll.
I was so happy to get that one.
Well, we'll do that. So I will, I will state that I am interested in continuing as chair, but I wanna hear from other people up there.
Why?
Why?
For you in the hot seat.
Well, I did write a statement. I'll read my statement. As, as chair of the select board in the last year, I've tried to make sure the board and the residents have the information they need to make good decisions. I've tried to have effective meetings. I've tried to keep the board on track for timely evaluation of the administrator and I think we, we did meet that contract deadline this year. Have the, I've had, tried to have the board approve the goals and then have some follow-ups on the goals. I think I would have liked to maybe do that a little bit better and I wanna think about that. I've tried to keep policymaking setting as the major focus of the board and I think we did a lot for that. All of this while staying on top of the major issues that the board has to be concerned with, including the Cape Cod Bridges, other MassDOT projects, the proposed gun range, potential hull tech to discharge radioactive water, addressing the updates to Title V regulations and the comprehensive wastewater management plan and the South Side Fire Station. I think managing competing priorities is the most difficult part of being chair. The board has two very important priorities that we need to make progress on in the next year, the comprehensive wastewater management plan and the South Side Fire Station. The CWMP was gonna require additional meetings, I think, and we have to talk about how we're gonna structure that. I, I really wanna have some discussion at our retreat about how many meetings we should have per month, how they should be structured and how we don't exhaust ourselves and the administration having too many meetings because they're getting, we're getting meetinged out, I think. I feel it's important for the board to give good direction to the town administrator by fulfilling our policy role and also work with the town administrator to make sure we're all working together towards our mission and vision, that we really know where we wanna go and then can support Marlene in getting there. But giving her clear direction is really an important thing. I would also like to the board to discuss how we can improve communication with the public and better inform our residents about things that are happening. And so that's kind of my thoughts. I feel it takes a while to get your feet wet in the select, in the chair role and it takes a while to get to know how to do it effectively and it's, so doing it another year would, I, I think I'd try to do a better job.
I think there's value, and I know having had experience with the, the school committee, that having a couple of years of consistency with one chair is, has helped to better the function of the, the committee in, you know, we together collectively have to be better, work better together. And if we're constantly changing the chair, then that's sometimes difficult to do, right? And the importance of, of self-evaluating how we function together. I think, I think we can do better with that. I have some thoughts on that, we'll save it for the retreat. But I think having a, a chair in a position for a couple of years is, will help that process a little bit.
But no more than two years. I mean, cause I, I've been asked by some people, make sure this is another seven, eight, nine-year thing.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if.
I think the chair gets burnt out after a while. The select board chair is, it's, it's a lot and I think doing it more than two years is difficult, so.
So if I may, two after Peter's done, I'll let Peter finish, if you were.
No, you can go.
So I, I mean, I, I, I think I agree and I know that when we did the reorganization last year, I actually had a lot of people come to me and ask me to run for chair this session. And I, I said the same thing that I said last year when Peter ran for his second year and that I really feel that it's something that needs two years to, to, to do it. I'm, I'm on my last year of, of my term and I had thought about it and, but, but I'm sort of one of those people, I, I live in the day and I don't know what it's gonna bring next year. I don't know where I'm gonna be. I don't have an agenda, I don't know if I am gonna run for another year. So I don't know yet, you know? I may really wanna be here and run for another seat next year, but I don't know that. So I thought, well, maybe I should try to. But then I said to myself, you know, I did say the same for Peter, that I thought two years is really what you need to do it right. So I do hope there'll be maybe more communication this year. I do get very frustrated when I find things out later, I think especially as vice chair. So I do hope that as the year moves on, you know, we have a lot more communication and that is something, I know you said that we can talk about at the retreat, but that's been ongoing for me, communication, so.
I mean, I was considering, just cause I'm going into a reelection year, but I guess keep on going with what we're doing, I mean, it's, but, cause personally, I was hoping you would take over as chair of the sewer commission, cause I think we're gonna have more issues with sewer going down the pipe and you know more about it than the other than, than the rest of us and you've been down that road. So I was kinda hoping that you would take over as chair of sewer, just, but that mean would open up the chair here, cause I don't think someone could be doing both. But you've done, you've done well in your position here as the select board and it seems the consensus here is to keep you in, so we're gonna have to figure out who wants to be the chair of the sewer commission going forward.
And I just wanna talk, I gave a lot of thought to trying to write out the process because I feel it's important for people to be able to come forward if they want to be chair. And I said, and the reason I said, you know. And I said, and the reason I said, you know, um, hear everyone who wants to be chair, have them talk about why they want to be chair, and then have people who have put their name in decide do they want to keep their name in or not keep their name in. And I'm gonna go back to my first year, I think it was, I had put my name in for vice chair.
Yeah.
And then Judy put her name in for vice chair, because she had actually put in for chair, and then didn't get elected as chair, and then I withdrew my name as vice chair. I said, okay, I'm not gonna, I'm withdrawing my name, because that to me is a, is an exchange between the board as a whole board discussing what the reorganization is, what they're looking for, why people want to do it, and who's interested, and then whether they want to differ. So I, I think we do need to talk about that process and formalize that process so that we know kind of what the process is and what the expectation is. And make it, it's a, can be a very uncomfortable situation, because you can't talk about it outside the meeting. You know, you can't, and like.
Right.
You know, and so there needs to be a process that allows it to, um, to, to evolve within a deliberative approach, so. Is there anyone else that wants to put their name in? Alright, is there a motion?
Motion to let Mary Jane as chair.
For another year?
Or.
On second?
Fiscally, what do we say?
I don't know, it's for the next year.
For the year. Most of the nominations.
So, well, first.
I don't think anybody else is gonna ask, so that's why.
Okay, you want to call, alright, so we should put that in the thing.
Who did the second?
I did.
Well, there wasn't, it really, uh, she nominated, so.
Yeah, I know.
You gonna vote on that, or you gonna close nomination?
Just, just close it, and then we'll vote on it, and then, 'cause you're the only one that's been, been moved forward.
So we have a motion on the floor.
To close nominations, and then.
We have a, no, we have a nomination.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't nominated yet, so, we haven't made the motion yet to take that nomination.
So a motion to nominate and close nominations.
Yes.
It's one motion?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, the motion to nominate me as chair for one year and then close nominations. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? It's unanimous, okay. So now we're on to vice chair.
I will speak on that.
Okay. Who would like to put their name in for vice chair?
I would like to nominate myself again for vice chair, for the same reason that I thought that it would be good for you to be chair for another year, as I did when Peter needed it that second year. I think, seeing as it is, it pot, could be my last year on the select board, I don't know, right? 'Cause I, I, I'm a day-to-day guy, and, um, but I do feel that, um, I think I, another year would, would, would be a good idea for me. I think, uh, I, I'd like to be, you know, better communications with you as chair this year. And I'd like to see overall more better communication with the board as well, so that we're all on the same page. I realize we have open meeting law, um, you know, that open meeting laws that rule our roost, and there's nothing we can discuss in between, which we don't. But I do hope there can be the things that, things that we can know in advance or have some, um, idea of to plan ahead so that we're better prepared for meetings would be helpful. If it's something that isn't a violation or, you know, however that looks, right? I know there's some things that, you know, we can, we could talk about that you don't necessarily have to talk about at, at the meetings. So I'm trying to figure out how that looks and how to just better communicate throughout all of us.
Well, that may be, I mean, I think it was kind of a, that was kind of a topic of last year, but maybe we can, maybe for the retreat, we can have someone who's been a town administrator and had been a municipal government and can really help us hone in on what kind of communication would be appropriate and what isn't, and what we can do, and, you know, so maybe.
And I, and I think, you know, some of the other things, of course, we've got a lot of really important issues going on with the bridges, our, you know, CWMPP, the Wareham, which is obviously a sewer issue. But, um, I, I just think overall, it, it would be a good year for me to really dig in under some of the, even the, the committees that I sit on. You know, I want to make a better effort to, um, make more connection with, like, Community Action Council, 'cause they were just impossible to reach throughout the year. So there's things like that, I think I'd really like to keep doing and, um, keep working hard and.
Yeah, I think, I think there's some norms, I will call them, that we can establish. As a board would help us to function more efficiently, um, more productive, so, yeah.
And I'd really like to see this, the, the website, the internet, I know Marlene is working on that, but I would really love to see our IT and our technology into today's time, because it is, our website needs a lot of help, and as does our email system. So I'm really praying that, you know, we can, we can do better at that this year, 'cause it can be really frustrating looking for things, and I think that's important for the, for the, like you said, our public outreach needs to be better, our Facebook, our notices, our contact, and we need to touch the residents more.
Um, or, speaking of this, and maybe I put it under future agenda items, but I, I, it might be helpful for the board to, and the public, for us to have a sort of an update on the IT goal that we're working on for the, the, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five. And what's that's gonna do, you know, how that's gonna change how things function? Because I think that's a really big part of that, um, the, um, the way that things work. For example, in our packet, when we get our packet, right? We can get an outline of the packet that lists each of the agenda items, so you can pull up that, and so you can go within the packet to wherever you want to go. The packet that the public gets doesn't have that outline in it. So if there's a two hundred and sixty-two page packet, the only way they can know what's going on is by going, you know, like page by page, or calling one of us and saying, where is this? And that, that is a function of technology, because once they redact the packet, they can't have that outline in it anymore. So how to make things work, what the issues are, what we want to try to accomplish, and then how we want to do it, I think is an important, is an important topic. But anyway, so Melissa's put her name forward for vice chair. Is there anyone else interested in putting their name forward? Okay, is there a motion to?
Motion to nominate, um, Melissa Ferretti as vice chair.
And close nominations.
And close nominations.
Okay, motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions? It's unanimous.
For clerk, I nominate Jeanne Valletts.
Oh, we gotta ask her, would you? Are you willing to accept the nomination?
I will accept the nomination for the clerk.
Okay, here we go.
As clerk, and, and the close nominations.
The two-year thing's out the window. When it comes to clerk.
Do you want some consistency?
You're all consistency with clerk.
But we are gonna update our rules of procedure.
I should defer, Anne Marie, would you like to continue?
She's like, now you can take it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we should have some.
We at least we have a transcriber.
I'm gonna take a silent but deadly role on the board this year.
There are advantages to that.
Mine is always deadly.
That was a motion by Peter. Who's the second? Has anyone taken it? Second by Anne Marie. To nominate Jeanne and close nominations. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Extentions? It's unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, my, my first two years on the board, I didn't take any jobs. I did sewer, but I didn't take any, I did board jobs. Alright, let's go back.
Everybody make all the meetings.
Well, it's not too bad, 'cause the minutes, these minutes are done by the administration, it's the, the job. The executive session minutes.
The management of them.
And, um.
Responding to public correspondence.
Yeah, and we have to cut, we have to have that discussion, because we.
That's part of that communication.
Yeah.
The umbrella.
Okay, town administrators report.
Thank you. Liz and I are very pleased to let you know that we have made an offer for the vacant facilities manager position, and it has been accepted. Mr. Samuel Barrett will be joining us on July first for his first day of work. The town received a number of very strong candidates, and two separate interview paner, panels were utilized to help me make the decision. The facilities manager position is not a department head, and therefore not subject to the veto period required by the charter, but I wanted to make you aware of this change and let you know that we are all excited for Samuel's arrival.
Where's he coming from?
He's coming from the private sector.
Okay.
Mast Dot can, has been conducting warranty repair work at Belmont Circle during last week, during overnight hours. The night work will continue this week. The following week, beginning June third, Mast Dot will need to do daytime painting work. It is anticipated that this will occur from nine AM to four PM, Monday through Thursday, of the week of June third. Mast Dot will be monitoring traffic conditions and make adjustments in real time if necessary. Recently, I have received a set of twenty-five seventy-five percent design plans from Mast Dot for three crosswalk projects to increase safety near bus stops. There are two locations on Trowbridge Road and one location on Sandwich Road. The DPW director has created a button on the DPW's website where these plans can be accessed and reviewed by the public. It is my understanding that this project will be discussed at the June fourteenth Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee meeting. As we near the end of the fiscal year, we are all watching our budgets carefully. At this point, we do not anticipate needing any year-end transfers. I'd like to thank all of the departments for their thoughtful planning and careful execution throughout the year. We are all working very hard to be good stewards of the public's money and to do as much work possible with the resources that we have. I want to let you know that I will be participating in a newly formed group called the Massachusetts Coastal Communities Alliance. The goal of the alliance is to provide a platform for information sharing and peer learning between local leaders who serve in coastal communities. Looking forward to bringing useful information back to board for implementation. Finally, Eversource will be conducting survey work along their utility easements over the next couple of weeks to locate underground infrastructure. This is just an informational notice in case you see them out and about. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes, we don't have any minutes, yes? Committee reports, any committee reports?
I can just, real quick, um, the Human Rights Commission, Municipal County Human Rights Commission, they've really ramped up, um, the liaison sort of, um, meetings. Now the liaisons actually meet once a quarter, along with the Municipal County Human Rights Commission. They have their meetings as well that we attend if we can. We're not voting members, 'cause we're liaisons, but of the board, but still, we, I try to be there when I can. But they are working to, um, get the liaisons more frequent information that can be provided to the, um, school departments, and they are going to be, um, hoping to get the town administrators involved a little bit more in the Human Rights Commission work, so that they're informed as well, and we can make decisions as a town on how do we get this information to the school department, how do we get it to, to those who in need, and the citizens. So that's where we're at, it's initial conversations on how to make it work, and they're gonna come up with sort of a, like a boilerplate or an outline of what it looks like, and then I'll keep you all informed.
That's great. I, um, I sit in the Labor and Personnel Committee for Mass Municipal Association, and, um, we had a very interesting, um, meeting, um, I want to say last week, but it could have been the week before, um, but, um.
You talking about Simula?
Uh, no.
No, you're talking about.
This is Mass Municipal Association Labor and Personnel. Peter's on the transportation one, I'm on the Labor and Personnel.
Oh, okay.
So these are statewide committees, which, um, if you, they meet once a month, and the Labor and Personnel, they talk a lot about legislative initiatives in the Labor and Personnel, um, sector. And the topic of this was, uh, federal OSHA regulations that are being worked on for, um, fire and EMS. And, um, it's, um, I, uh, got a lot of really good input from Marlene, um, on her thoughts about this. But basically, the committee has some concerns, because they're taking best practices and trying to make them regulations, and there's some things, they've become quite unfunded mandates and put some real stress on the town, so. It's gonna be something that we're gonna have to be carefully sort of watching with our legislators to make sure that whatever happens with this, that, um, we can, um, have a voice. Um, I'm gonna go back to reorganization for just a second, 'cause there was in our packet, select board representatives, uh, committees, and there's some, there's a couple errors on this. But, um, I, I wasn't planning to vote any of these this week, uh, but I want to kind of just go through some of them. So, um, the MBT Advisory Board, I, I, you've just been doing that, is that something, did we appoint you last year? There's no bl-.
I was appointed, I think, two years ago, but, I mean, I've been, I've been attending those meetings online with Brian Kane and as our representative.
So I'm just curi, I, we should just figure out what exactly that, it, what the term is, what the term of that is, or whether it's something we vote every year. The, uh, I just wanted to note that the road traffic safety was, Jared was doing that. On the other post, Employment Benefits Trust, which was the second thing on the list, that is, um, by the trust document, the chair of the select board serves as that. So it was actually me that's been serving last year, not Peter.
Yeah.
The, um, the chairman of the Board of Selectment also serves on the Trustees of the Veterans Memorial Committee, so I've been doing that one this year or two. There's one that's not on here, and that's another thing that the chair does, and that's the NIGRAN trustees, and that's part of the trust document. So that's chair of the school, uh, chair, chair of the Board of Selectment. And that's like meets once.
It meets once a year.
It meets once a year.
That's why we never looked at getting sworn in or whatever type of thing, 'cause it was just a group that Patty Parker would call together, and it's used for the chair for this committee that's designated for.
Yeah, the chair of the school committee did the same thing.
Yeah, it's by the trust. It's, it's a, it's, it's, it's by the trust, it's not really an appointment to a committee, but it is something that should be noted, because it was kind of, um, unexpected for me last year. The, um, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority is kind of listed twice, I think.
What happened is, is, it's been a select vote or the town administrator, but, uh, in looking back, you don't, it doesn't have to be one or the other, it's just made it easier, and George wanted to stay on, and so we appointed George Slade as our representative.
Right, but it's on the, it's on.
Our list.
It's on, it's, it's on the first page and it's on the second page as well, it's on twice.
Yeah.
So, and, and these last ones are here, 'cause they're like non-select board people, so I don't know. And then the other thing is the ISWAM, um, Business Model, the Landfill Business Model Working Group, is, uh, that hasn't met in a really long time. And now we're gonna have the ISWAM Business, the ISWAM Building Committee, so that's probably one that's gonna come off. And then we could, I don't think the Financial Policy Working Group has to, do we have to dissolve that? Or is that, that's town adminis, I mean, you just named our person, right? So, until project.
It was, it, you don't need to dissolve it, it.
But it's probably done.
It's done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a single purpose.
Yeah, so we can take that off.
What about the Joint Base Cape Cod? I know Melissa's on it, but George Slade's also listed as a second individual on the Joint Base Cape.
Yeah, I don't know why it's still listed that way, because I'm the, I'm not the alternate. I'm the main, main, and then Peter, Peter had said he wanted to be the alternate.
Yeah.
They just didn't get updated.
There's a couple of them that I don't think got updated last year. There's, there's still like...
And do you want to be the alternate still, Peter?
I don't, I don't mind that.
Okay. We didn't have one.
Unless someone else wants to, so, yeah, we should just say, so that, you are, Melissa's the person, and then...
I know, I've gone to meetings on her behalf if she couldn't make it.
So, there should be an alternate, but that's kind of an open thing?
I am, I am going to say that I am giving up the South Side Fire Station Building Committee. I guess think it needs new flesh, blood on that committee to see if we can stimulate it, but I am interested in keeping the other committees that I do have.
Okay.
Just to give, you know, that being your bridge representative, I'm interested in that, and maybe picking up roadway traffic safety committee, swap one.
I'll stay the Community Action Council, too.
Okay.
I'm going to get them this year if they kill. And the Emergency Management's going to be dissolved, so that's going to merge into the Police Department, correct, or they don't need?
Well, I don't know.
No, that's the position, not the committee.
Oh, it's the position, not the committee.
Yeah, that, that committee was a group, a group of...
Oh, okay, I was confused by that, if it was the whole committee. Okay, good.
I had this like...
I'll stay on that, too.
...thing here. So, so it looks like, I mean, we have, we have the, so, the roadway traffic safety committee, well, actually, I thought Jean was kind of interested.
Yeah, I'm kind of interested in doing that, yeah.
Yeah, and then...
How about Bourne Community Engagement Committee?
The, the fire station feasibility, that's something else I'd be interested in working with.
Yeah, the one that Peter's dropping off, I was thinking he'd need someone else.
Yeah. The question, that we have the ISWAM Building Committee, and then we have the South Side Phase Fire Station Building Committee, and then you're kind of interested in getting rid, doing, you want to, you...
Bourne Community Engagement, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, ISWAM, I'm happy to tackle that if no one wants to tackle that.
And does George want to stay on that?
Well, yeah, that's the other thing.
So, we haven't heard from, we should find out from him, so...
Yeah, because I know he does like that one. He always gives a report and everything at the end of the year.
Yeah.
On which one?
The community.
The Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority.
Oh, I thought that's the one you're interested in, Jean. Is that the one you're interested in?
Oh. The roadways.
The roadway traffic.
On the other one.
Oh, the other, okay.
I, I said I could be an alternate for Joint Base Cape Cod, too.
Right.
Yeah.
That might be good. So...
Who's keeping what? Because I feel like I'm being pushed in some ways.
If you want to, if you want to be the alternate for the Joint Base Cape Cod, that's fine with me.
Do you want to hang on to that?
Um, I mean, I guess, I don't know, but let's go, let's just go down the list and make sure, because I know you got to take on some stuff. I'm giving up, I know one committee because, but let's just go down the list and make sure that everybody has their fair share.
If you, you could join the, if you wanted to take the Emergency Management Committee, you could join that if you felt like dropping off of your, the South Side Fire Station and taking that one on. I would, I mean, we don't meet very often, I think we've met once, so it's not a big, you know, poll, but...
Yeah, I, I used to be on that committee.
All right, well, if you wanted to take that, I'd be fine.
So, let's go, let's go back. I had my, my things stapled together backwards, so I did the whole presentation backwards.
Okay.
Okay, that's the, everyone's going like, I can't follow what he's doing, like, I can't, yeah.
All right, so are we...
Let's start at the beginning.
I thought we weren't doing this, but, okay.
Yeah, well, let's just talk about, you don't have to vote them, but we can kind of, I'd like to, if we can talk about interest and then maybe come up with a thing that's more correct for the next round.
I can just send you the ones I want, I'm going to stay on everything I have except for the emergency planning, if Peter wants that. How's that? Makes it easy.
Peter or someone else, all right.
Or anyone else, right.
MBTA I'll keep, because I've been going to those.
Mine's easy.
Can we go, can we go down the list, so I can?
Yeah.
What a list.
All right, we're going to start from the list. We're going to start from Affordable Housing Trust. Peter wants to continue that, right?
What's the list we're working off of? Because I have a list here online that starts with Advisory Board, MBTA.
Is that the, is that the right list?
The one in your packet on page...
Oh, you know what it is?
Twenty-seven.
All right, it's the second page of it.
Yeah, that's what MJ was...
I was, that's what I was doing. I was like, I stapled it wrong. So, so, we'll start with Affordable Housing Trust, is, has been Peter, and you're interested in staying, right?
Yes.
B.C.I.T.A. Anne Marie.
Sci-Tech?
Sci-Tech.
Well, I think we're going to talk about that when we get our review next.
June 4th.
June 4th, about the status of that committee. The Landfill Business Model Working Group, that, that's, I think we can dissolve that committee.
Okay.
Because that, that committee was set up originally to do the, figure out what they were going to do in the future, and they did the ASH thing and, and other stuff, and it hasn't met, actually, in a couple of years, I don't think. But it will be replaced by the ISWAM Building Committee. Which, we need to have someone volunteer for. Cape and Islands Water Management Trust, I'm appointed until 2025 for that. Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, this is where I'm saying it's on here twice. So, we could take it off there. I guess, Community Action of Cape Cod and the Islands, that's Melissa. You want to stay on that?
Yes.
Community Engagements, Anne Marie, you want to stay on that?
If nobody wants it.
So, if you're interested in that, Jean. Jared didn't have a lot of committees, so we need to kind of move things around for you. Financial Policy Working Group, we can take off the list. Joint Base Cape Cod, the member is Melissa, right?
Yeah.
And the alternate is open.
No, Peter was going to be the alternate, right? Oh, no, or...
Peter, do you, are you interested in staying as alternate?
Or do you want to give it to Jean?
I'll give it to Jean.
You sure? Because you said you were interested, yeah.
Okay. And you can always join those, like, Pete, I used to get on with George.
Out in the public, it's in the audience.
We both could, would get on together, even though I was an alternate, just if you wanted to get used to the meetings.
Especially with the, when they have the outreach for the mass development.
Yeah, I want to keep up with it, sure.
Next is Local Emergency Planning Committee.
That's me.
Melissa. You want to stay on that, or that's the one you don't want to do anymore?
No, I, if, I would do it, but if Peter wanted to do something different, and he wants to join that one, he can, I'd certainly be willing to let him take that one.
And I will leave, we'll leave it there.
Okay. Mass Maritime Liaison.
I'll stick with that, it's going well, it seems to be anyhow.
The Bridge Advisory, we've had Peter and Anne Marie on that group.
Yeah, and I would sustain with that.
You want to stay on that, yeah? MBT Advisory Board.
I'll stay.
We need to find out what that term is.
We, we make it, we can, we can, we can say until, until, you know, every...
Well, I, yeah, I mean, it should be a one-year appointment, I think, because it's not until the project is complete, really.
No, I realize that, yeah, so...
So, we'll just do it as a one-year, unless it's got a longer term.
It doesn't.
Because like the, the Water Protection Management Board has a longer term, so that's why it's, that's what it is. So, OPEB is the Chair, and it's, that's like meets once a year. Road Traffic Safety was Jared. You interested in that, Jean?
Yes.
Policy Subcommittee, has been Anne Marie and myself. One time it had three people. You want to stay on that?
Sure.
I'll stay on that. You want to be a third? No, you don't think we should do it?
I don't think you should, I don't know why there was a third. I don't think you should have a third, because then it's a quorum.
Quorum, I was going to say that. You got to post them anyways.
I, you do have to post them anyways.
But then it's a quorum, and...
But then it's a Select Board meeting.
Yeah.
Then it's not a policy, it's not a subcommittee. The whole idea of subcommittee is not to have a quorum.
Yeah.
So, we should look at the charge of that committee and see if it says three, and fix that if it does, but take it off the list, just make it into two people. So, South Side Fire Station Committee. I have been going to all those meetings since it involved, but if Jean wants to take that on, I will defer that.
I'll take it on, sure.
Okay.
I can understand your interest.
Well, I mean, it's, I have to say that...
We all have an interest. We all want it to...
We all live on the South Side, but...
Yeah, as a liaison.
It's been, it's been a long thing from 2009, when the CECL report, I actually got us to start talking about the priorities for capital and like what we had to do, but the importance of advocating for, for town meeting is going to be really important.
Yeah.
And that, the trustees.
That's the Chair, right?
Yeah. Waste Water Advisory Committee.
That's going away eventually, isn't it?
Well, I, I'm think, well, first of all, it was originally appointed by the Sewer Commissioners, but has been now reappointed by the Select Board, once we changed the direction of the CWMP. I'm not sure that there's a necessity for this committee anymore, and there aren't any funds for environmental partners to meet with them. So, they helped us, like, do what they were doing, but I guess, I think we're at the point where it's kind of the Select Board that has to do it, I think. So, I don't know if we want to report, reappoint.
Comprehensive, right?
What?
Now it's, it's more of a com...
Well, it was to advise on the comprehensive management plan, so they did a lot of the alternatives analysis, they had a lot of meetings with the Waste Water Advisory Committee that helped do some of that legwork. I'm, I'm, I kind of feel about this, the way, I'm watching time here, the, the way that we did the marijuana thing, where it just had to be the whole Select Board meeting on it, and it's too, you can't have a subcommittee making the decisions when it's a board decision of policy and strategy and what we're going to do. So, I think we're going to just have to go back to some ways, workshop format and try to figure out how we're going to do it with that, and then just decide what we're going to do with the Waste Water Advisory Committee, but it is appointed by the Select Board now. And then I grants the Chair, and then the harm, the MMR Community Advisory Council, is that still there, or was that?
It's merged into the other one.
Right, isn't that part of the three MRs? So, is that like not even there anymore?
Actually, no, wait a minute. One is the pollution, you know, for basically, with the community count, Andrew Campbell has one, and Missy has the other. I thought they're merging, but they are separate.
Can we find out more about this Community Advisory Council?
We can ask Andy, Andy to come before us and give us an update.
Yeah, because I don't even know what they're doing, so, yeah.
And John York's hands up. He's been on and off for a while.
And then what about the ISWAM Building Committee?
I can tackle that one.
That group, actually, you need to create that group.
Okay.
You need to create the membership of that group.
Oh, and give it a charge.
All right, so we, do we have that on the?
It's on the agenda for the fourth.
Okay, all right. So, we can do that. All right. So, let's, can we maybe redraft this and have it in our packet for the fourth, so we can vote them? Yes, John, you, quick, because we have to end by 8:30, so I'll give you a quick comment.
This question, maybe for the Chair, who I believe represents the town on the ad hoc working group for transportation issues in the canal area, is that right?
No.
No. Can anyone give me?
What, what ad hoc?
It's sometimes called Susan Moran.
Oh, that, yeah, that's different, that's her committee, but we should send the Chair.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's appointed by the Select Board, that's just, that's a committee by Sue Moran that is an ad hoc committee, just when they're doing repairs.
I understand what the committee is. You were going over a list of the places where Select Board members were, participated in X things outside of the town.
That are appointed by the Select Board.
Okay, so it's not appointed, okay, so that's the different, I get it. But I did just also want to observe that there's several overlapping transportation representations on the OCCRTA, MBTA, Cape Bridges Program, and I would add in that position of, I'm not asking you to do that, in my mind, I add in the position of representing on that working group that I just referred to, which I think, as I just watch all these things unfold, is a much more effective group, and therefore a more powerful, or important position for whoever puts in that position. I think they should be elected by the Select, and that would be great, but, but I think that it would be nice if, if that's noted somewhere to the public, that that working group exists, and whoever represented is on that group. So, I happen to know that, but other people might want to contact MJ, and with something that they would like her to bring to that group, I think that might be a useful function. That's my comment. Thanks.
Yeah, because we don't know what Dylan Finanz is going to keep that committee going forward, or whoever gets selected to that seat.
And that committee will dissolve as soon as the Bourne Rotary Project is done. It doesn't, it's not a continuous committee, it just is there for...
As need.
It's a project-based committee, so. And that project's almost done. They still have to do rumble strips, and there's a couple broader pieces of signage, but it's almost done.
I am confused, then, because I believe that same committee, was it the same people calling themselves a different committee that worked when there was bridge repairs, the previous bridge repairer in the Bourne Bridge? Didn't that committee meet to, to discuss that, and?
When that project was in place, Sue Moran set up calls to have like a touch-based meeting every other week during the project. That's all it is. It doesn't make any decisions, it just gives input about, like, things. All right, we have to move on, we have to move on, John.
I'm sorry, I'll send you my comments on that, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay. Correspondence?
Correspondence for May 28th, 2024. A. Oh, wait, I'm not the clerk anymore?
No. Do it, you do it, I should...
All right, A. Upper Cape Tech Fiscal Year 25 Budget Final. B. Shore and Harbor Committee, D. and R. Personnel Recommendations. C. DPW and START Filing for Energy Efficiency Reconciling Factors. D. Race Amity Day Proclamation and Participation. E. Lavoy, Finance Committee Resignation. F. Coastal Community Composting Project Request for Information. G. John York Email Questions to Federal Highway Administration. H. John York Referencing Access to Cape Cod Canal Service Road Shared Use Path. I. John York Referencing Signage at Rail Crossings. FHWA Response. And J. Mass Coastal Letter.
Thank you. All right, next item is Future Agenda Items. Anything, future? I'll try to send out a new, I'll try to send out a new list of like what we've got going in June.
Well, we have the Sci-Tech, right?
Yes.
And I, I would please, if it would please the board to review the quarterly report that they sent. Actually, I can send you, there, there will be an updated one, but it's just going to be maybe a few more items from the previous, the first report that they gave, so, just as a review.
Okay, sounds good.
But they will be sending another one. We meet on Thursday, so it's to finalize them.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second. Oh, you guys got me. We should have let Jean, she didn't get, I don't even think you got one second in, did we?
She got a second.
No, she did.
Did we get you some? Okay, good.
Yeah, she did.
Just making sure.
Click on the draw.
I don't know, who was that second?
You got to move quick in this room.
Was that Melissa?
Yeah.
Or Peter?
I think it was Peter.
Pick one.
Give it to Peter.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, unanimous, it's 8:20, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.